Richardson, District One, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence following the pledge.
Oh God, I have been ages past, I hope in years to come, our shelter from this stormy blast and our eternal home. Father God, once and again, this is your home, we're serving, calling on your great name, thanking you for all of the blessings that you have bestowed among us. And we thank you Father this morning for allowing us to come and assemble, and we pray that you may bless everyone that's under the sound of my voice, and we pray that whatever we do today, you may get glory and honor. Guide us all and forgive us and keep us, and cause your faith to shine among us, in the matchless name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the House of the United States of America, and to your republic, from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna ask that at this time, we would observe a moment of silence in memory and in commemoration of those who lost their lives in the tragic occurrence of nine eleven. We were so blessed not to have been affected amongst ourselves here immediately by what took place there in New York and in other places, but there are thousands of families today that are having to relive that tragic occurrence, and we want to lift them up in our prayers, and pray that God would protect this country from any reoccurrence of such nature. God bless America.
Roll call, Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
We're so happy to see, thank you, thank you, good shepherd of District One. We're so happy to see each and every one of you. The rules of the council are quite simple, and we're gonna ask that everyone observe them, and if they don't, we have rules for that as well. First, we ask that you turn off all electronic devices before or upon entering the meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance appeal of public hearing agenda item before entering the council meeting. When addressing the council, we ask that the speaker state his or her name and address. Any person seeking to speak before the city council on an unagenda item must contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday at two, before 2:00 PM preceding the council meeting you would like to speak. Any person who hadn't followed that rule won't be allowed to speak. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute will remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, and this is important, when addressing the council, there is to be no personal address. In other words, you direct all your comments to me, you should not indicate any of these council members, and if you do that, I'm gonna call you out of order. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements ought to be made to me, serving as the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and no public outcry allowed. And let me put emphasis on maintaining decorum, because that's my job, and I guarantee you I'm going to do it. And so the rules are for everybody. At the end of four minutes, you hear a bell. At the end of that second bell, that means that all of your time has elapsed, and we ask that you would sit down. And if you want to speak again, sign up for next week. Those are the rules of the council. Thank you for your interest in your local government. Madam City Clerk?
Approval of minutes is September 4th.
Some more.
Second.
In property motion, a second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Minister, approved.
Communications from the mayor's office.
None at this time.
John Peevy.
Good morning.
It's always a pleasure to come before you, to present to you some of your finest city employees. As you know, in public works, in public services, we have a lot of components. You see the big things, the trash, and garbage, and potholes being repaired. But I bring before you today is Angela May, who I think everybody knows probably. She does the things that helps make the city so very special in the events that we have. She is in charge of the recycling with many of the people here, which has become quite successful from her efforts. She's also in charge of litter, and she and the mayor are on first-term basis, first-name basis, because that's one of his things. And it's a tough job, and she is so devoted to her position that I've had to kind of throttle her back because she works too much. And so we've reorganized, and she's got it to where people are now responding more efficiently, and she has the, really, the tough job of working with the community service workers who are working off fines and things of that nature, and we tend to work around their schedule, which adjusts Angela's schedule and these fine people here. So I asked Angela to come up and speak, introduce, and give her a little more of the glamour of what she does, because when Angela May speaks, I don't know how many of you remember the E.F. Hutton commercial? People, listen.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
I am, again, Angela Pompey May. We are litter and recycling.
Okay.
We are a team. It's no I, it's we. My personnel, we pick up the litter through the city. You see the little trucks that says litter patrol? These are the guys that get out there and they do the hard jobs. Stella is with the recycling center. She came over from the old location on Government Street. We have two locations. I am also over the community service program, and that's with the people that come through the courts. Last month, we had 546 people come through the community service program. They dedicated 4,386 hours to the city of picking up litter, assisting in moving furniture, also in the tire recycling event. So we are not just litter and recycling, we also over the, I am also over the oil spill crew, and they serve as my oil spill crew too. And that's any city vehicle that has a hydraulic leak, an freeze leak, me and my crew, we get out and clean it. It saves the city money because we don't have to call in a contractor to clean it. Each and every one of my personnel has been trained on what to do. And that's litter, recycling, oil spill, and community service.
I have a question there. Congratulations, and you know, job well done. I don't believe that the litter department had really been introduced before the council, before today. My question is, how is the litter determined, what area y'all gonna pick up in? I mean, does it come from, I mean, how does it determine?
We run the same route as the trash department. The same route the trash department runs, which is in 12 TDs, which is in 12 areas. And we run north side and south side. And so we put out trucks and vans in the area. Also, we get SROs. And what I do with the SROs, on the weekends, when I have a large amount of community service people, we run all SROs during the weekend. But Monday through Fridays, we run the districts. We run right the same route. If you see your trash truck, you should see a litter truck also.
So that's every street in the city of Mobile, every week?
We try to get on every street, at least to show some attention. We have some areas that are worse than others. So you know, if we get to an area and it's basically clean, what we do is we funnel back to somewhere that was worse with the picking up. But most of the times, you know, we try to hit every street in Mobile. You should see us, and if not, we, on the following week, we go to a different section. If one area was extremely bad, we go to another street that we missed the week before.
Did I hear you say something about tires?
Yeah, we do a tire recycling event. We have one coming up also, which we know that tires are a big problem in the city of Mobile. They throw them everywhere. So we came up with the idea of doing a tire recycling event to give the citizens the opportunity to bring the tire instead of throw it in the tree, or throw it down the street.
Bring it to the...
Bring it to sites. We have sites set up, like parks. We have five sites set up for tire recycling, and most times, it's one in each one of the, well, it's normally one in each district that we put a tire recycling event.
Okay.
We may need to get that information to you so you can distribute it to your district.
Yeah, that should be really announced, because many citizens do not know that, and I think that would be a great tool for citizens, especially the councils, to know. I appreciate that, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, me as well.
Mrs. Gregory?
I would just like to commend the team. My wife and I frequent the recycling drop-off locations, both the one in Midtown and the one out at the park. And your folks are out there, raining or shining, freezing, hot as heck, whatever the weather, and every time we drive up, they have a smile on their face, they offer to help. I think it's really remarkable working under those conditions, and they're just, they just give great customer service. And I want to commend you and everybody that works on that, because it's really commendable.
Thank you.
Thank you. I too would like to just give my great appreciation on behalf of the district that I represent, and all the people that appreciate everything that you do on a daily basis. I'm intrigued by the comment about working on weekends and going after SROs, and I know we have the sign ordinance that allows people to put as many signs in the right way, as long as it's the right size, but no signs are allowed in the medians at any time, either intersection medians, street medians, park medians, whatever. So do your, does your group pick those up and literally remove them?
We do.
Or do you, how is that done? Because people will say it's only on weekends, and we just have to keep looking at it.
Technically, it's not our job. It's another department.
I see.
But if we find that they're not in the right of way, and they are where they're not supposed to be, we've been instructed to pick them up.
Good, that's excellent.
And so we pick them up, and if we get a lot, and you call about them, we'll give them back to you.
Oh, don't.
But if not, we recycle them.
Keep them, it's out of control.
Yeah, it is.
And is that, is also like those big flags that they're never supposed to have in that come out on weekends? Are you removing those, being instructed to remove those?
No, we don't do the flags, but we will remove the campaign signs.
Is your group able to write tickets if they see somebody littering? Are you in...
No ma'am, but we have on our trucks, on our litter trucks, we have GPS tracking, we have cameras. And so if they catch somebody littering, they can touch the camera, and it will capture that person's tag, and also that person, and then we can turn it over to 311 or to David Dokkenbach's department.
Okay.
And they should be able to write the tickets, because they're not able to write the tickets.
Thank you, thank you for all that you do.
Mrs. Gregory, and then Councilwoman Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you Angela, and your entire crew for all that you do, because we all know as we drive around the city that litter is everywhere. So thank you for what you do with the community service workers. I would, I hate to say that we need more of them, because we know what that means, but if we did have more of them, we could put them out picking up litter and cleaning up the city a whole lot quicker. But thank you for all that you do, it really does make a difference. And I just have to piggyback on what Councilman Dave said about the recycling center. That's where I go to drop off all of my recycling. And everyone is so nice, so helpful. They help me get everything out of my car, it just, it is a terrific experience for all of us, and I think you're doing a really great job, so thank you so much for all that you do. And I don't care what John Peevy says about you, you stay tough. You know, you go girl, you are tough, and we want you to be tough, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you for those words.
He's right there.
And I...
Yeah, we do want a picture, yes.
I would like to say that whenever I call, you all respond. I just appreciate you so much, I ride through my district, and I see a real bad spot, I make that call, and you all respond. But what I would like for you to do is Marion is up there, I would like for you to leave your cellphone number with Marion.
I will.
Okay.
And I'd like the rest of my colleagues in saying, thank you. I see a remarkable difference in my district as it relates to litter, and when I run into problem areas, I can always let you all know, and not instruct you to do anything, but just apprise you of a situation, and you all really are very timely and responsive, and I appreciate you and your leadership, and I certainly appreciate Mr. Peevy.
Amen.
John Peevy has done a yeoman's job with our Public Works, and I'm proud to say that publicly, I will go to the halls of Congress and say that both of you all have done an outstanding job with what you've been tasked to do, and thank you all so much for you all coming up with this.
See, I've been, I'm smart enough to know when she tells me to do something, that's what we do. One of the things they do also is they go ahead of the mowers and right away now, and help pick up in advance.
Thanks.
And this next year, we're gonna transition into more enforcement to really help try to solve it.
Let's have some of our team come up in front with the councilmembers.
John, come on.
That's fine.
Oh, yeah, John, we need to be up there.
Yeah, come here, come on.
CJ, we can't see you.
Litter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I hope that the community understands how hard you work, and they do a better job themselves.
Whoa, that's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Amber Guy with the Mobile Public Library. I live on 17 Van Hoover Street here in Mobile. And I'm here this morning just to give you guys a few little updates on the library. We were one of 50 libraries throughout the United States to receive a grant to support the Great American Read, which is a program that PBS is putting on right now, and the series kicked off in the spring, but now until the end of September, they're going to be having a show once a week with Meredith Vieira on PBS. And basically, they've picked 100 books, and Mobile has chosen The Help, which was, you know, also made into the movie. So on Tuesday, September 18th, we're going to be doing a film showing and book discussion at our West Regional branch. And on Thursday, September 27th, the food consultant for The Help, Martha Foose, who is a wonderful, wonderful southern cookbook author, is going to be coming to the Ben May May Library to talk about her experiences working on the film, and share with us some really good southern food recipes. And then on Tuesday, October 23rd, we will be having a viewing party for the final episode of the Great American Read, where the best book out of the top 100 is chosen. And right now, anyone, anywhere in the United States can call, or text, or vote online for their favorite book of the 100, and that's through the PBS.org website. Another thing I did want to mention is, right now at our Tolmanville branch, we are hosting the Making Alabama, which is a bicentennial traveling exhibit. It's a wonderful, wonderful exhibit. We have docents from DAR who are helping guide people, and that is at the Tolmanville branch through September 29th. We had an opening reception there on Saturday that attracted more than 100 people, so we do have quite a bit of interest in the program, and I do encourage you, if you are over that way, to take a look at the exhibit, because it is just one that you walk through, it's self-guided with headphones and information. So thank y'all so much.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Gregory.
Amber, I'm really happy to hear that Martha Foose will be here. I've had an opportunity to work with her in the past, and she's told stories about when she was doing the, basically it's a set dresser, but hers was a table dresser for The Help.
Right.
And one of the stories, and I don't want to give anything away, but one of the stories was about trying to figure out how to build a tofu drumstick, so that the actress in the movie, Jessica Chastain, who was a vegetarian and just would not eat anything that resembled meat, would eat it in the movie. And she had to make many, many of these, because it took so many takes for her to get the scene right. So she tells a story about that, as well as trying to make all of the foods era-specific. And if you think back when this movie was made, or was supposed to have been made...
Right.
You have a lot of Jell-O molds and things like that, that we don't necessarily see so much today. So Martha had a great time with that, and she tells some great stories.
Yeah, and you really, you do have to take so much into consideration with the lighting and, you know, the fact that the food sits there for hours at a time. So, so yeah, we're really looking forward to the talk.
She's quite a personality, so that'd be great.
Amber, I have a question. If, so our system has picked The Help as out of the 100 to showcase, so if our readers want to weigh in, and they pick The Help, perhaps then the number one book would be The Help.
That is true.
So we're gonna encourage that.
Definitely. So thank y'all so much. Did anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
Some more.
Second.
Property motion, a second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals, we have the appeal of Jeffrey and Pamela Kent concerning the ARBs denial of the application regarding the retention of railing, gate, and planters at 1654 Government Street.
Is there anyone here today that, yes ma'am?
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Pamela Kent, and I live at 1654 Government Street. I'm nervous. I'm just so sorry. This is for the appeal on the handrail and planters. And my husband and I moved here in October, and were unaware of the rules and regulations of removing and of the old railings to the homes in our area. And we have been fighting termites since we moved in, and the railing was full of termites at the time, so we didn't really have a choice, we had to remove the railings. Because I didn't know, we replaced it, and we put it at code, and I just wanted to show you a picture of what we're talking about. I'm not sure if you have a picture of it, and what it looks like. But this is what the, oh, I'm sorry. And this just shows how, that it's built on both sides of it. We did, I did do research, and I looked at the Gamble House out of Pasadena, California, which is also a craftsman-style home, and I made the railings horizontal rather than the vertical that's throughout Mobile, and that was part of the contingency that they said that wasn't appropriate with Mobile area. Our house is very unique, it has a sister home on Dolphin, on Dolphin Street, it's not, it's a two-story, but we haven't been able to find documentation that, we actually think originally that there was no railing that existed on the veranda. There have been pictures of two different styles of railings prior to the one that we took down. So we were just hoping that we would be able to keep what we have. We really did try and make it where it looked more like a craftsman's home with the sturdier, the sturdy railing, and it's within the natural colors of the wood, and we're actually putting the home back to the original color of white, and we've repaired the, I mean, power washed. We're trying to make it come back to life, and, go ahead.
Let me ask you, Mrs. Kent?
Yes, sir.
The pictures that we're seeing now is how you have the home configured presently?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do you have pictures of how it was before?
The actual council did, I apologize. It was the, originally, it was an open railing with an X and a square in the middle. It's very common in this area. I'm sorry, I do not, and I apologize.
You may go.
Okay. So I just was hoping that we could, they had actually talked about, and had a committee come down and talked about actually removing the top railing, which is, it's actually attached to the planter itself, the square, and just dropping it down to the same height as the pillars, which we would be, we would be more than happy to do that, to drop it down, one, to make it a little lower, but I am, that porch is this high on me from the ground, so the top of that porch is right here, and the original railing was right here. So it was very low, and I have, we have had, since we've been in Mobile, we have had two break-ins in the back of our house, because we have a house that's vacant next door to us. And so we've really been just trying to close ourselves off a little bit, where people can't just come on our porch, because we've had that happen to us, because our house was vacant for, I think, close to seven years, that where people would sleep on our porches, or I've had people at 9:30 or 10 o'clock at night knock on our door and ask if they could sleep on our porch, or have water or food, and so we really want to try and close ourselves off a little bit, and be able to sit on our porch, and someone not feel like they can come walk up onto our, to our, because our front door, if you see the house, is not visible. You have to walk onto the veranda to actually come to the front door. We do not have a, you can't see our front door from the street. I'm sorry I didn't ask, I didn't know, I really didn't know. I really do apologize for that.
Any questions, Mrs. Kent?
Mrs. Kent, the real estate agent that you, did you use a real estate agent?
I did. We moved from Fairhope, and she was my agent in Fairhope, and when we bought this house, we knew about, that we were within the district, that the Dolphin Way district, and we knew we did not have a plaque, but my understanding was, was that as long as I was not making an addition to my home, like another room or of that nature, that I didn't have to ask for permission to replace something, because that's what I was doing, I was replacing a handrail. I didn't realize that that was a part of that.
Okay, so the issue is not that you didn't know you were in a historic district, you do, you in a historic district.
I did know, I did know that we were in a historic, that I was, yes, in a historical district. I did not realize that I had to have permission to replace the railing that already existed. I thought I only had to have permission if I had, if I was adding something, in terms of something that wasn't there, or an additional, an addition to the home itself, because we have a cottage, and was told that if we wanted to either take the cottage out, or to add on to the cottage, that we would have to ask permission for that.
Do you down, or have you ever had a set of written rules governing the, all of the historical homes in the district?
I have one now, yes, sir. I was given one after this happened.
After the fact. You, did you have that before?
No, sir, I did not. No, it was not given to me at my time of closing, or anything of that nature.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Did it, was it the real estate office that gave you that? How did you get the rules?
Well, no, because I...
Was it somewhere from historic?
I mean, I knew I was within the, I knew I was within a historical district, and I knew I had to take care of paint colors and that type of thing. knew I had to take care of paint colors and that type of thing. And so when I made my phone call, I had already, I made a phone call to change, that we were going to change the colors and such on the house. I just didn't realize when we were doing this. And of course, we were in the midst, we had foremost in termites. So we were replacing pieces that were gone. And to be honest, I just didn't realize that that would be something that I would have to ask them for when we did that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone here today from the ARB?
Do you mind if I?
I don't, come on.
Okay. Paige Larg, I'm with Historic Development and I help service staff for the Architectural Review Board. And just to kind of help put into more context what Pamela has said, this house was designed by C.L. Hutchison, Sr. And there are about thirty...
Can you move to the microphone?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
There's actually a book on the Hutchison family. Their kind of lineage goes way back into being builders and architects in Mobile. The portico at the Cathedral of the Immaculate Conception was an addition and done by one of the grandparents, C.L. Hutchison. This was in 1924 and it's a prominent house. A lot of people know it as Elephant Walk. One of the former owners used to really like that movie with Elizabeth Taylor, if you've ever seen it. I have. It's in syndication. It's a good one. But so that's how it got its name and a bunch of people will know it as that. There was a service request order that came into our office, Historic Development, on May 16, 2018. Afterwards, one of my colleagues, John Sledge, went out and I believe saw that work was being done and gave a stop-work order just to let them know, hey, call us and we'll talk about the work. By that time, the railing was already in place. And the Kents followed up right away. They came in the next day and we started the discussions. And they made an application to ARB so that they could retain the railing. They appeared before the board on, at first, on June 6, 2018. At that time, the board held over the application so that a design review committee composed of two people could go out and possibly just kind of brainstorm of some possible solutions. Because we, they did recognize that, you know, this project was called, you know, had a cost attached to it. That could convene on June 14. On August 1, 2018, the board met again. And after further discussion, they noted that the material change, change did impair the building and within the district. And it was based on sections 6.4 through 6.6 of the Design Review Guidelines, which set the standards for material change. And just some pertinent sections of that is preserving a front porch is a high priority. A rear or side porch may also be important to preserve, especially for a building located on a corner lot, and their preservation is encouraged. Repair a porch in a way that maintains the original character, while obviously the original railing was not on there. So the next section states, if replacement is required, design it to reflect the time period of the historic structure. And if an original porch is missing entirely, base a replacement porch on physical or photographic evidence. If no evidence exists, draw from similar structures in the neighborhood. So that is what the board does base their decision of denial on.
So I guess my question is what would the board have, Ms. Kent, to do?
What, to replace it with something period appropriate.
Which would be what, which would be what?
Something that was there before was kind of a more geometric, what's known as like a Chippendales style. Also, vertical balustrades that are more classical in design. I know that coding, codes can be an issue, as she said, it's very high up. There's been ways in preservation to kind of circumvent that issue. So we've had other solutions that involve still keeping it at a height that was more historically accurate, but still getting the protection you need from, you know, any kind of incident.
Mrs. Kent, are you willing to, to make the modifications that they have suggested?
Well, we've, we've talked about it and gone back and forth. One of the, one of the things that, that I have...
Could you go to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. One of the issues that I have is that, that we're very open to Government Street. And if I do the same that they've asked to do, you can see every, you can see us completely. And one of the things that we had asked them was, yes, that we would lower it. We understood that, we could lower it. We asked if we could possibly take some natural foliage, some larger bushes, which was actually originally, if you're familiar with the house at all, you couldn't even see the veranda until we moved in because we removed all of the foliage that was around it. So no one actually knew what was back there. But we would be more than happy to actually take and put very full-grown camellias or anything that they suggest to put in, in front to cover that, if that would help. But it would still give us the privacy that, that we would like to have. I mean, we, we really would like to be able to sit on our porch and drink our coffee. And if we were in our PJs, it'd be kind of nice if we can do it without everybody being able to look straight onto the porch because it is very large.
Would you all be amenable to that family doing that?
It would, it would still, regardless of the landscaping, it would still be on the house and be period inappropriate, unfortunately. And there, and obviously, security is the issue in, in many of our districts. And they would be allowed to, they've had some fencing done. We allow for kind of a picketed gate in that front entrance way because like she said, the doorway is off the side, side elevation. They're also, they'd be welcome to get a four-foot-high picketed fence to go on the front parking line so that people can hopefully, you know, deter anyone from entering in.
Mrs. Chairman.
Mr. Richardson.
Well, I, I have one question. And I know that we discussed this before, but I'll apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kent, Mr. Richardson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The, the issue I'm having is that, and this is basically the issue we have with all other people that appear to us, is that they would not have done that had they known. So it seems to me that unless MHDC can come up with a way to notify people who purchase property in a historic neighborhood, what their responsibilities are going to be, we can expect others come. And then not just coming down is costing them money. Looking at this wood, this, that's not any cheap wood now. This very expensive wood that they went and to replace what was up there with. And she said she finally, she was finally notified after they put the wood up. It seems to me that if they're coming to a neighborhood with restrictions, whoever's over these restrictions ought to make sure that they have a copy of whatever it is that they're required to do. I believe at, at my house, if, if a board is rotten, I believe I can replace that board without getting a permit.
Technically, any board that you replace, just FYI, for everyone, even if it's replacing one board on the exterior of your home, it would require a building permit because afterwards inspections comes out and inspects that.
That's, but, but are you saying, at my house, if a board is rotten, I'd have to get a permit?
A building permit.
In a, in a historic district?
Even, even if you have to obtain a building permit.
Well, then a bunch of folks in violation of that.
I never heard that before.
All the city of Mobile is in violation of that.
My understanding is that.
Nobody's doing that. Nobody's doing that.
Can we get, Mr. Dr. Buck, that's cut out?
Well, we all know nobody's gonna do that.
No.
Nobody, you need to bother Dave Dr. Buck. Nobody's doing that. If a board is broke at my house, I'm going to Lowe's, I'm going to buy a board and I'm gonna put a board up.
I have already done that.
Everybody's done it.
And I'm gonna do it again? So, but the only, the only thing I'm saying though, if there is, I, I need, I'm gonna get some clarification before this is over that, that you can replace them. But what about a window, if my window pane, somebody knocked my window pane out, I have to get a permit to put the window pane in?
You were supposed to.
If that's the law, we're gonna change it. We're gonna change that law. It won't be the law alone.
It might be a slippery slope, but...
It won't be the law alone. No, we're not putting citizens through that. Because when the police get come out there and start arresting people on some frivolous stuff, saying, you, you put the window pane in. We're not going down that road. Anyway, I think those, those people are special that's in these historic districts. I think they ought to know upfront what it is they're going to be required to do. So we'll have a valid reason to find them or make them take down what they put up. We would have a valid, would be no excuse. But here we go again. We've got one here, put up some beautiful woodwork, looks good to me, but it's not satisfactory to the MHDC. And where they were asking her to take all of that down and put something else, even if she shielded. They said, they don't care if 4K sees it, we still want you to take it down. That's a little tough, but I'm concerned about the future. That you'll be right back down here with another person saying, we didn't know. The issue is how can we make sure they know? And I'm not gonna keep ruling for MHDC if the people are not notified what their responsibilities are. I'm not, not gonna do that. We got to figure out a way. If you need the council to pass a law, whatever you need to do, y'all need to brainstorm and come up. Well, what is the best way? I guess if you give every real estate office in the city the book that's with that information in, to say, if they use a house in the historic district, give them one of these or something. We, we got to come up with something.
Vice President.
Uh, Mr. Small and then Mrs. Richardson.
Yeah, I believe that she's, a citizen stated that she used a Realtor in Fairhope, correct?
Did.
So that might be the reason why the Realtor did not tell her because she wasn't familiar with the Mobile, City of Mobile ordinance and everything. So, thank you.
She has an office over here?
They do. She has, she's, she was with Roberts Brothers, so...
Oh, no.
Her office was in Fairhope, but it was Mobile.
And your closing was here in Mobile? Or was it over in Fairhope?
No, ma'am, it actually, it was here in Mobile.
Yeah, I would mix it up. You had mentioned something that you did some research and you looked into this architectural style for California.
It was, it was the Gamble House. It's just considered a craftsman style and it actually had the same type of railing that, that is on this house. And of course, when we had our conversation with Mobile, it was said that they wanted it more what was traditional to Mobile. And that's where I, that's when we had the discussion about the fact that my house is not your typical bungalow cottage. It's very different from any other house in Mobile.
The, this is a question for the, for the Historic Commission. The railing now is horizontal across.
Correct.
And, and in keeping it would be vertical. If the slats, if that, if that had run, would that have?
No, it would not have. It was, the detailing is more kind of classical in style. There was photos in your packets that showed two other railings that were in place, were more of a vertical balustrade, yes, but more classical in shape, had a little bit of spacing to it. The previous railing when it was bought, that was, had termites, was more of a Chippendales style geometric pattern to it.
Yeah, there's a picture in here of it. Could any of this wood that faces on Government Street, that particular aspect of your railing, could that be reclaimed and refitted to look more in keeping with so that you could use your product and your carpenter again?
Well, it's built on both sides. So when I say the railing, the railing's this thick. So both sides have been done. So if we take the front off and kind of do it like they want, you're still gonna see every bit of what's on the other side.
But you mentioned that you would be willing to landscape too.
Yes.
So I'm wondering if some kind of middle ground that you could use some of your product and not have to take everything down because of the lack of knowledge, although the lack of knowledge is still on the individual, because a lot of people don't know laws and they get pulled over.
Right.
But they've broken them. So that, just not knowing doesn't work.
I understand.
So, did the board consider some kind of compromise in that manner?
That's why, that's why, sorry if we can hear you. That's why the design review, the first application, the first meeting that the application was heard on was held over so that a design review committee could go out and try to make some solutions like this and, and just brainstorm. It was basically a brainstorm session. And then came back to the full Architectural Review Board and presented their ideas and findings. But based on the guidelines that I read to y'all earlier, which are, is adopted as the standard of review based on the ordinance, that's how the board came up with their decision to, to base it on and out.
I'm sorry. Was the board unanimous? Because I know that some of the board members did not have a problem with the actual railing.
Yes, I think, yes, it was on that decision. And I think they were not as, when it came back and, and reviewing again the guidelines, some of the items that they thought might work in brainstorming did not adhere to the guidelines. So they based it on that decision. And Mr. Richardson, I really hope that you'll continue to support the MHDC because we, we would really, you are, your district is very important to us and those historic districts that are in there. So I understand the need for outreach and we are, we do work on that as, as has been discussed. Not just based on the ordinance where it says it's on the seller, but also trying to send notification through malls, the list that they send us and things. So I'm sure I'll see you around.
Mr. Chair, there's a, there's a photograph in our packet that shows no railing. How was that obtained? That was a, was that a before picture that was presented at some point?
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not aware of which photo.
It was a, it was an August picture, seven...
I think if you look, it might just be the graining of the photo. There were two photos that I provided. One had the geometric shaped railing.
It says, number six, south elevation, dated 7/26/18. It has no railing. Is that not this house? It looks like it?
Do you mind if I come over and...
Sure.
Sorry.
Either that or there's an identical house with an identical sidewalk and identical trees.
There is, there is a sister house to it that has no railing.
This is, says south elevation. I'm sure it's the same. That has no railing.
Yes, right here. So here's the horizontal slack.
But that's not, that's not the same as, as that.
That wraps on the other side. So there's stairs. So this would be the front right here. That's the side and that's the image. And then you can see the railing there as well.
So this picture and that picture are the same?
They are. It's just a little hard to...
That's not a really good picture. Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Could I, could I get you to give you, give us your last name again?
Kent.
Mrs., not Mrs. Kent.
Larg.
Mrs. Larg. Mrs. Kent?
Yes, sir.
I happen to have the privilege of being your City Council representative.
Oh.
And I am somewhat perplexed by what I'm seeing and hearing. Because I think we have to find, hopefully, a happy, workable medium between preservation and reoccupation. That hope that property is set as a plague, as a blank for seven years, you stated to us. And what we want is exactly what you're doing. We want citizens who live in Fairhope to come right back here to the City of Mobile. And, and I think sometimes we get so mired down in the weeds of what this looks like and what that looked like. Had some nosy neighbor not called this complaint in, let's just be, I think, had someone not called this in, because that's what triggered this. Someone called, SRO was made, Mr. John Sledge came out, probably nothing would have been said. You put your planters up, your vegetation up, nothing would have been said. Because Mrs. Larg, do you all regularly go out and just inspect homes?
Yes, sir, we follow up with an SRA.
Had some nosy neighbor, again, not called and turned this in, you would not be dealing with this. I'm, I'm gonna ask my colleagues, I know there was much commentary on this in pre-council, I'm gonna ask that we would hold this over 60 days and that, that your body would meet again with Mrs. Kent.
Mrs. Kent.
And hopefully, if some, a reasonable compromise can be reached that would incorporate what she has, take out some of what she has, talk with our attorney, there's an option that we might could, could use. You all take the next 60 days and if you could ask, if you could ask that they would work with you to reach a compromise, then we would hold it over 60 days and see hopefully what will surface after you've requested that they work with you on a compromise. a compromise.
Okay.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
If I could.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I have no objection to holding it over to see if, see if something can be worked out. I, I, but I wanna be frank and honest about what my opinion on this issue is, and the standard for our review of the rulings of the ARB is, we, we can only overrule those, those actions if they're arbitrary and capricious, if they're not reasonable in nature. My concern about overruling the ARB on these issues i- is that it becomes just an aesthetic judgment on the part of the council as to whether, uh, as to whether the, not you, but any particular, uh, violation of the ordinance is acceptable or not. And I, I think at that point, the council's action becomes arbitrary and capricious. We, we have experts, we have an ordinance, the experts that we have hired to interpret and, and, uh, and enforce the ordinance have spoken, the board has spoken, and so I think we've, I think the council has to be very careful before it overrules those experts, because then, as I said, we become arbitrary and capricious. And so I just, I just wanted, I just wanted to make that statement.
Mr. Chairman. With all, with respect to the, uh, holdover, I would be in favor, and I hope that they can work out something. I, I do have a question though, I wondered, from the time you started work.
Yes, sir.
Which, I mean, this is Government Street. This is not back tucked into a neighborhood with, with trees everywhere where nobody could see it going on. Was there any time at all when the neighborhood came by and said, "Hey, what are you doing? You know you can't do that."
No, sir.
Um, was there, was there any time with, after, did you, was there any work done after you were notified by, uh, the city that you were in violation?
No, I haven't.
Your work was complete when you first heard that you were in?
Yes.
Possible violation?
This was all.
So, so the last question is, um, how long did it take you to build this?
Uh, we moved in in, in, uh, October thirty-first and we've been doing it since then. We've been fighting the termites and, and painting the house.
I'm talking about new wood, now, not talking about destruction, cause that kinda gonna go so good, they took off the ugly stuff.
For this?
When you started up with the new wood, how long did it take you before you were done?
Oh, um, it was probably sixty days. Because of the weather and such that we had, it was about sixty days. And I, and, and to be very honest with you, I think the reason why that we got, that there was, there, and I think this is it, I may not be wrong, but when we first did this, we, um, our gate was being put in, our new gate, and I have three very large dogs, and one of them are already been hit, it got, it snuck out. So we'd actually taken and put a gate in the front entrance to the stairwell to lock our animals in. And so it was made out of the same stuff, but it was not stained or anything. And so, we did that so that our dogs could not get out. And that's, when we put that gate up was when someone made the phone call or had the complaint, because they didn't like the gate closing the entrance to our porch. Because before that, there had not been any conversation. And that, and this had been up for a while, it was the front gate that, that I think caused the phone call.
Okay.
My opinion, that's all.
Mrs. Kent, did you all do this work in the dark of night?
Pardon me?
Did you all do this work in the dark of night?
No, sir. We did it in the early morning and afternoon.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is in reference to Councilman Dave's, um, comment. Uh, and he cited the law, and I agree with the law. Excuse me, but over and over again, this council has told MHDC, "Find a way to notify those people who move in the historic district, so they won't have to come back claiming they didn't know." We have told them, "Find a way." And we also told them that if they keep coming here claiming they didn't know we were gonna rule against them. Here we go again, not, we got a person standing before us saying, "They didn't know." So, I hope when the sixty days are up and you have to come back, y'all would come up with some way to notify those people moved in the historic district, but oh, their responsibility, else this won't end. Citing your law to me is not gonna help one bit if they don't know. You can tell me what David Crockett said, Jimmy Buffett, it's not gonna matter. It's not gonna matter unless they knew what their responsibilities. Uh, they don't know, it's not gonna matter. Let me, let me ask for just glad to see, are the, the laws that the Kents, uh, are not in compliance with, these are local ordinances.
Right, this is based on, so through the local ordinance, um, guidelines can be adopted and that's what the standard of review is based on. These latest, uh, the latest guidelines that were adopted were in May of two thousand sixteen.
Well, I think, you know, just, there, there's a certain level, I think, of unfairness. I guarantee you, if you were to get in your car, drive through the historic district, you're gonna find grievances and infractions that haven't been reported but are against the rules. You're gonna find that.
But very much.
But you, well, I believe it is, cause I, I see, as I drive through, uh, I see some homes probably that are just in dilapidated condition. I know, I know that's against the guidelines. And then you got this very overly concerned neighbor who called in on the Kents, putting them through what they're having to go through. It may be time, we're gonna look at the appropriate committee, it may be time for all of this to go to committee, uh, for us to look at what we're doing and how we're doing it, to make certain, uh, that what we're doing, uh, not only is, uh, friendly and agreeable to preservation, but also makes sense, also has some, some semblance of, of, of friendliness to the average citizen. Uh, and we'll, we'll probably be announcing that next week, so that we won't run into this situation again. But I'd ask our council mem, uh, our colleagues, I guess, uh, we're not at it yet, but I'd ask that we'd hold it over for sixty days. Uh, Mrs. Kent, if you will make a formal request to the MHDC, uh, that they would meet with you all and, and, and let's work towards some compromise, and then we'll hopefully see this again in sixty days.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And if I can ever be of assistance.
Yes, ma'am.
We're glad to have you in our district.
ARB.
You're in the best district in the City of Mobile. If I can ever be of some assistance, you let me know.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Something for you.
Yep, I'm sorry.
ARB.
I, I was just.
ARB, pardon me.
It's the Architectural Review Board, which is the committee. It's a city agency.
If you would get what they are be, uh, and ask them to, to work with you on a compromise, and, uh, well, I'm not instructing anybody. Uh, Mrs. Kent, if you would make the request, that would be great and we'll see it hopefully in sixty days. Thank you.
Motion to postpone for sixty days.
Second.
The proper motion is second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, it's postponed for sixty days.
We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on October twenty-seventh on Spring Hill Avenue, September twenty-seventh in Cathedral Square Park, September twenty-ninth on Government Street, October fifth on Old Canal Street, October second, third, ninth, tenth, sixteenth, seventeen, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, thirty, thirty-first on Dolphin Street, and those are from six PM until ten-thirty, and October fifth and sixth on Dolphin Street, and that one is, uh, those two are from six PM until one AM.
I think we have someone who wants to speak to one of those appeals. I'm not sure how that is handled, but just calling to attention before we, before anybody makes a motion.
Okay, um, all right, we'll, let's take that one separately then, we do have someone, um, people signed for that one, we'll take that one separately, uh, so that they can address those, and then I'll take this last one, September twenty-third on MacArthur Street.
And I wanna take, uh, O'Dayley's Irish pull-up separately.
That's the one we're taking separate.
Cause Mr. Casey Ginn is here to speak.
Yeah.
And also Mr. Peoples.
Not yet.
Not, not yet though, not yet. And Mr. John.
Okay, so we're, um, good to go on the others?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So we're.
All noise ordinance except for O'Dayley's.
Right.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Proper motion is second in a discussion. Do not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Okay, so now we'll take the, um, request of O'Dayley's for October second, third, ninth, tenth, sixteenth, seventeen, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, thirty, thirty-first, and October fifth and sixth. And we have, um, Casey Ginn here to speak.
And Mr. John Peoples. Mr. Ginn?
Yes, sir.
My name is Casey Ginn, I live at five fifty-four Saint Francis Street, and I have one question, cause nobody can really give me an answer on this, and I'd like to know how many waivers can one entity get in a length of time?
I, I don't believe there's a, a, a number.
Pardon?
There isn't a number.
So there's no limit?
There's, as many as this council approves.
So there's, you can get one every night?
Well, we, we probably wouldn't do that, but we.
Well, can you get thirty-eight days in three months?
Technically, you could, yes.
Yeah, I don't know what the Form 8 code's for then.
Do you wanna elaborate?
Right, you wanna, you either fall.
Well, yeah, I mean, I can elaborate if you want me to, I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. This guy is circumnavigating the protection that the Form 8 code offers people by getting these waivers, so he can play so loud that we cannot stay in our house. And this is just too much, thirty-eight in three months? And then he's asking for one o'clock in the morning on two nights? In October?
Is that all you got?
Uh, you know, that just seems extreme to me, I'm sorry, I may be a peon, but I live down here and everybody in my neighborhood is upset about it, but most people can't take the time to come down here in the middle of the day, because they have jobs. And our neighborhood's fixing to boom. I mean condos are coming in, townhouses are coming in, people are wanting to move in there. I just sold my three rental houses because I couldn't keep people in them because of these bars. But now people are trying to come in and reinvest, you've got to protect these people.
And we don't deserve it.
I mean, downtown's nothing unless you got ordinances to protect these people. You've got to live and coexist, and they're on, the compromise I'm asking for on this, lose the amplifiers. It's a forty by sixty foot lot, why do you need amplification? You don't. It was fine, this thing went on for a year, nobody said anything, nobody cared, it's great. I don't, I got nothing against wiffle ball, but now he gets louder, now he's got bands, and it's just exponentially getting to be something that we can't deal with. And it's hard to keep tenants in your, in your rentals. And that's all I'm saying, is, you know, just reconsider this, lose, I mean, nobody needs a PA in forty by sixty foot lot, that's as small as, that's the size of this room. And that's all I got to say.
No, it's very good what you have to say, and it helps the council. That's why if someone is going to go over what is considered, um, acceptable noise, for lack of a better term, and come in with these many dates that they want to go above the decibel reading, then this allows you to come down and tell us that it's a problem.
Yes, ma'am, I'll record.
And we're here to reflect and try to help, and I hear you loud and clear.
Last time I recorded it, it was a hundred and twelve to a hundred and fifteen decimals. That does damage. And the, and, you know, I mean, he plays loud, and here's another thing that needs to be addressed, the police officers, anybody you talk to do not know the ordinance for noise. You, you ask one, he says one thing, you ask another one, they say another thing, nobody is on the same page about the ordinances that the Form 8 code makes perfectly clear.
And time to have this kind of activity. And residential, and it happens all over our city, actually.
It does.
And it's a big problem. It's a really big problem.
Yeah, noise downtown, we have the, all this concrete and brick buildings, and everything bounces off.
Yeah, it does.
And it gets louder and louder, and pretty soon you, I, I live in a warehouse that I've redone, I have eighteen inch walls, and my dishes rattle from this bar. That's just not acceptable. And there's a man, John Peoples trying to build a condo next door to me, they have windows in the front, those people can't stay there. I know this, I've lived downtown for fifteen years. I've seen it all. And this is the worst thing downtown's faced, is this noise. It's gonna be hard to rein in.
Mr., Mr. Ginn, let me first say that one of the statements you made is absolutely, totally false.
And which one?
You are not a peon. You live in.
Depends on who you talk to.
Well, you live in District Two, you're not a peon. Your, your opinion matters, it matters to me. You and I have had this discussion, I've been to your home.
Yes, sir, we have.
I still have your cup upstairs. Uh, he makes a lot of fine cups and things, y'all might need to get with it. Pardon?
What was in the cup?
Nothing was in the cup. And, nothing was in the cup.
Fool me.
Just a, a nice cup, thank you. My, my point is, I'm gonna ask that we hold this one over, uh, for at least two weeks. I wanted to see if I can get a meeting with Matt Lamar and you and Mr. Peoples, and let's come to, uh, compromise. One of the reasons we have the vibrancy and all the excitement downtown is because we have those establishments, but they're gonna have to learn, uh, to coexist with the neighborhoods. Now that we have residential density building up, they're gonna have to learn to modify and adjust just as you all are being asked to. So I'm gonna ask that we hold it over, we're not gonna approve this today, until I can reach out to Mr. Lamar, coordinate with you and Mr. Peoples, the four of us sit down and come up with a compromise that'll work for everybody and see how that works.
All they have to do is lose the amplification, they don't need those big speakers out there, it's simple.
No back and forth, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Well, Mr. Ginn, I believe, uh, your time may have expired, but, uh, but we, I'm taking under, we're taking under consideration, uh, what you're saying to us today.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Peoples, John Peoples?
I'm, I'm not doing that. Mr. Peoples?
I know what you said yesterday. And I won't take the two minutes.
Yes, sir.
I'm John Peoples, I live at one oh seven Ryan Avenue, and, uh, Mr. Richardson's favorite constituent, he keeps our alleys graded, and we have no complaints there. Uh, my firm is at the final stages of completing a three million dollar renovation and new construction of, uh, the former building housing, Matty's Restaurant, uh, nineteenth century African-American Masonic Lodge, which we are bringing back to life. Uh, there will be sixteen new apartments there, and we have had a remarkable level of inquiry. Once we finally get that CO, uh, I expect that, that we will be leased on this immediately. We have a, a real problem with the noise that is projected from the back of the bar. Uh, it's a great business, uh, it's successful, I'm supportive of it, and Mr. Dave's will tell you, I've, I've been known to, uh, stand in front of loud band myself from time to time, uh, which is why I have problems with my ears. But, all that being said, it's a tiny space back behind that bar, and it's great to, to play kickball and wiffle ball back there, I love it. Uh, if I were younger, I'd be out there with them. But you do not have to have amplifiers the size of Volkswagens to project to a space that size. And when you're elevated on the second and third floor and we're two hundred and fifty feet away from it, it really does rattle the glass of my brand-new and incredibly expensive windows that, that overlook this stuff. So it, it is an issue for us, I feel like it can be resolved, uh, and it's simply a question of sitting down. This is, I didn't even know about the waivers, uh, or about the hearing, and, uh, but I think if we can all get in the same room, we can figure out a way to make this work for everybody.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mrs., uh.
Mr. Vice President?
If you don't mind, let's make sure that we get, uh, Mr. Ginn's contact information and also Mr. Peoples, so that we can coordinate a meeting as quickly as possible. Mr. Dave?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to concur with Mr. Peoples on the issue of standing in front of loud bands, although I'd point out. although I'd point out that that was several years ago. But, you know, and of course, I will defer to your wishes as the councilman for District Two.
Thank you.
I would say, though, in passing, that this request that's before us seems to me extravagant in the extreme in terms of the numbers of days they want and the lateness of the hour. So I certainly hope that the four of you, I guess, when you get together, can work something out that will be amenable to Mr. Peebles and Mr. Ginn.
I believe we will. Matt Lamar, I believe, is a responsible young...
He has his servant aboard with him.
I believe, I've talked with him on several other issues. I don't believe we're going to have one problem getting him to make the necessary modifications. And so I look forward to coordinating with both of your schedules in mind and his. We all sit down, I believe we'll be able to knock this out.
Great.
Yes, sir.
Thanks so much for your time.
Hey, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And your investment in District Two. Thank you.
We need a motion to lay it over for two weeks.
A motion to lay it over two weeks?
Second.
Probably motion second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is laid over two weeks.
Public hearing today is a public hearing to fix costs for securing the structures at eighteen fourteen Clinton Avenue, four twenty-nine Africa Town Boulevard, thirteen fifty St. Stevens Road, twenty-six sixty-three Fox Drive South, seventeen fifty Virginia Street.
Is there anyone here that would like to offer any commentary on the properties mentioned by City Club? And not public hearings are closed.
Public hearing to consider assenting to the vacation of rights of way in Cooman Dairy Estates.
Is there anyone here that'd like to offer any commentary relative to the assenting of vacation of the right of ways in Cooman Dairy Estates? Not that public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Gregory Dennis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Gregory Dennis. My address is fifty-nine nineteen Warrenwood Drive. Over the past six months, I've investigated why the City of Mobile and the University of South Alabama was treating residents of Hillsdale Heights subdivision in a manner I considered to be unethical and illegal. I've gone on tours with the mayor, District Seven councilperson, and USA officials on tours, showing them how their actions have taken a negative effect on the residents' property value, discussing possible solutions to restore the neighborhood they've destroyed. Last week, I explained to the administration and city council that my investigation had confirmed the City of Mobile and University of South Alabama officials were willfully and intentionally discriminating against and bullying the residents of Hillsdale Heights, informing the administration and city council of the actions I considered to be unethical, illegal, and discriminatory. Now District Seven councilperson wants to build a wall in the neighborhood to stop access to USA through the neighborhood. She previously tried to justify the barricades, insinuating the residents would be dumping, driving, and walking on USA campus, portraying the residents as if they were dangerous criminals or something, disregarding the fact that the residents are citizens of the state of Alabama and has a right to go on the campus if they so desire. I personally object to any attempt of the city council to close off access to the campus through Hillsdale Heights, as this access has been there for over fifty years without any complaints from the residents. The seven-or-so home games USA will have at the football stadium each year certainly don't justify building a wall or stopping access to the campus through Hillsdale Heights. The residents surrounding last stadium have successfully dealt with the traffic and noise for seventy years without any buffers or walls. In an effort to ensure the mayor, city council, clearly understood the residents' complaint, I sent them an email identifying the undisputed facts and questions for them to answer today. The City of Mobile and University of South, these are the undisputable facts are as follows. The City of Mobile and the University of South Alabama drew a red line dividing Hillsdale neighborhood in two thousand and six, identifying the property USA wanted. Once the red line was drawn dividing the neighborhood, the City of Mobile stopped paving the streets and maintaining the infrastructure, which was behind the red line. For example, I live on Warrenwood Drive, and the city paved the section of the street that was in front of the red line, refusing to pave the portion of the street where my house is behind the red line. ASR rating number seven-nine-five-nine-four-eight was created to pave the rest of Warrenwood Drive on November twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen. The City of Mobile has chosen to deny their requests year after year after year, continuing this red line discrimination, refusing to pave our streets in an effort to push the residents out of the area USA wanted. The City of Mobile gave USA approval to illegally install barricades throughout the neighborhood behind the red line, even though these are public streets, in an effort to push the residents out of the area USA wants. Once the barricades were installed, the City of Mobile stopped maintaining the infrastructure right away behind the red line, expediting the destruction of the infrastructure behind the red line, continuing their effort to push the resident out of the area USA wanted. I would like for the city council and the attorneys to answer the following questions for the citizens and residents. Would it be your opinion the property owners behind the red line in Hillsdale Heights is being discriminated against? What action would you take if you were one of the residents behind the red line? What action should a citizen take if they are being discriminated against and bullied by city officials? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. May I see the club?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Gregory?
Before I make any statements, we do have a couple of other gentlemen here who have signed in to speak, who live in the Hillsdale community. They are here to help facilitate something that is on the agenda today, which is some discretionary funds that I've approved to go to the neighborhood. So before I make any statements regarding what Mr. Dennis has said, I would like to call on them so that they can speak, because I think they will talk about the discretionary dollars, which is on the agenda. But if you will give us a little bit of leeway, they may also shed a little bit of light on the history of the neighborhood and some future projects that we are working on.
I have no problem with that at all. Yes, sir. Yes, sirs.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Gary Hart. I stay at four-one-four Vanoy Court, Mobile, Alabama. I'm currently the president of the Hillsdale Area Community Development Corporation. First of all, I'd like to thank the city for the money they've been giving us and the grant that we will receive shortly for enhancing our entrance ways and the front of the community center. Quite a few years back, the community decided to ask South Alabama to help us with the blight destruction and crimes that we had in the area. So we requested that the houses be torn down. We had assistance through the city to put pressure on South Alabama, a state agency, by saying that they would write citations so that we could get the houses torn down. The houses were being stripped of wiring, plumbing. They were used for drugs, prostitution whatsoever. Since that has happened, the people were driving in the back of the area, just dumping. No one saw anyone come, but we saw vehicles and trailers leaving empty. We asked for a barricade to be put up to stop that. Corporal Garrett Bronson, used to be with the Fourth Precinct, actually went digging back in some of the trash, found addresses, names, and cited people for that. We have improved on this community. It is a very safe community now, and we continue to thrive, and we want to continue to use the city and South Alabama to help us improve and sustain our community. We're very proud of the work that the city has been doing with us, and we try to work together. I just, I mean, we're grateful for what the city has done and the support that they have given us.
Mr. Hart?
Yes, sir.
May I ask, would you say that your organization represents the majority of the residents in the Hillsdale Heights?
I can't say a number right now because they have another organization that has been revitalized. We were the existing organization at the time.
Yes, sir.
There were no other organizations doing anything in the community. We have been doing this since nineteen ninety-four.
Yes, sir.
When John Peebles and all the rest of them were on...
Charlie Waller.
Charlie Waller were on the council and everything. We had the community center built. We've asked for some discretionary funds to help enhance the entrance ways to that. We've had problems with cleaning up out there. We've gone to our councilperson, they've got the city crews to come out. Anything we've really asked the city to do, just about, they've actually came and done and helped us in our community. It doesn't take long to get police response out there, if you're not afraid to give them your name, number, address. If you're afraid to give out that information, yes, it takes a minute, because they don't know if it's a prank call or not. But if you call, we get responses. And as far as the infrastructure in the back of what we call the back of Hillsdale, we're asking that South Alabama would accept all of that, so that it would take the footprint of Hillsdale down to the current size of what it actually is. You know, we have about four hundred houses up front that we're continuing to use, and we still have people that are investing and buying out there. Habitat for Humanity is continually building.
Yes, sir.
So we are making progress in Hillsdale, and we're there for the long term. I'm looking at the sustainability for the entire community, not just one house, not one street, not one person. We're looking for just the entire community to blossom and grow. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. I appreciate you coming, and I have worked with Gary's group before Gary was the president, Charles Owens was the president, and I've worked with that group as long as I have been in office. Recently, as he stated, the Hillsdale Heights Homeowners Association has basically reformed because they used to be active some years ago, and now they are reforming. So we will have two groups in the Hillsdale community who are working to make improvements in the neighborhood. And as I've stated before, we always appreciate people who have a passion for their neighborhood and who step up to the plate to help make improvements and to take ownership. So, you know, we welcome everyone to the fold who want to do that. Before I forget, I think Bethelina Gibson has come in. She came a little bit late. So Bethelina is the president of the Hillsdale Heights Homeowners Association. Thank you so much for coming.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, city council members, my name is Fred Love. I am, my address is thirty-three ninety, I get five minutes.
Oh, yeah, yes, sir.
My address is thirty-three ninety-two Al Smith. I grew up in Hillsdale. Grew up with the previous speaker that spoke. Me and him, we friends. We disagree, but we're friends on a lot of things. But today, I'm going to be Fred number two only because of age here, Mr. Richardson. But I moved back here from Georgia. I started investing my money. I'm getting ready for retirement. So one of my things to do was to come back, help my neighborhood out. So I brought several homes out of Hillsdale, several lots out of Hillsdale. So my thing was to come back. But I did my research before I done this. I wasn't going to put all this money into this neighborhood without doing that. I've several times sent emails to Ms. Gregory. I've talked to several people, talked to Gary, talked to the previous people that served before him. And I know South Alabama want to do some things. They done some things back in the sixties when they took it over. You know, they asked all the people to move up front. You guys not aware of the history? They asked all the people to move up front. They gave them houses so they can move up front, okay? They was able to go up front, pick them out of house. So, you know, dealing with South Alabama is nothing new to Hillsdale. They've been a good partner with some things. And I want to say this, everything that Mr. Dennis say is not bad, so to speak. There's a lot of things that he say that I disagree with, okay? And sometimes people approach, come over. But we're very passionate about Hillsdale. I'm very passionate. I'm very passionate about working with you guys to help us. We want you guys to help us. We want South Alabama to help us. But, you know, I don't want you making me mad, because when I get mad, you get out of control. People are passionate about things, and they lose their temper, and they do things that they don't normally do. Okay? I'll say. But one thing I want to say is that we want you guys to work with us. We want our councilperson, who've done lots of things out there. I talked to the previous owner. I think she took office in two thousand and five. We got a center built out there in two thousand and two. I am a member of both of the groups. I cannot speak for the group. I am on the board of directors for the homeowners association for Hillsdale. We are going to work together, both of us as a group, to come up with some ideas that we can prevent, that we can present to South Alabama. Our own property on the same street that Mr. Dennis on.
Mr. Dennis?
Our own property on that same street that Mr. Dennis on. Okay? And we want to see some things that happen out there to help us out. It's gonna happen out there, that I got faith in you guys. I got faith in our councilperson. I got faith in South Alabama, that they know that a neighborhood is behind there. Okay? So, you know, today I come down here to say is that we want to work together and try to get this thing moving. But I'm down here speaking as a citizen. I'm not speaking for, from the other group. Me and Mr. Dennis both is on the board of directors for that group. Yes, our president is here today, and we plan to get this ball rolling, work together, work with Gary and his group, and we just want y'all to be patient with us right now. Okay? Thank you. And thank you again for funds and what you do, Ms. Gregory.
Thank you. I appreciate both of you all coming and Mr. Love being a part of both groups. It is my hope...
Can I say one other thing? Next year, we planning the sixtieth anniversary. Hillsdale was formed in nineteen fifty-nine. So we planning the sixtieth anniversary that she's going to help us with. Okay? So we want y'all to know that. Hillsdale ain't going away, okay?
That's right.
We are planning ahead and getting the rec center and the whole property reserved in time so that we can have a big celebration, and I look forward to that. Thank you for coming, and thank you for being a part of both boards, giving of your time, Gary, of course, for all that you do, and Bethelina, thank you. And Bethelina has given me, several weeks ago, I can't remember exactly when it was, a list of some things that she had concerns about, and we turned all of those in. A lot of them are being taken care of now as we speak or have already been done. We toured the rec center recently and pointed out some maintenance needs that are underway. And I have a list of some projects that are actually underway at the rec center, as well as these maintenance needs that we pointed out that needed to be fixed. One of the problems at the rec center, and I was not aware of this, I've pointed it out to some of my colleagues, is that there is only one custodian for like four or five of these rec centers, and so a lot of the maintenance needs are not taken care of. Sometimes also what happens is I've received phone calls and emails from some of the people who go to the rec center, primarily seniors. They've called me about some things that they see that are not being fixed or not being taken care of, and they don't understand that the staff has already turned in those requests. They've called to the downtown department heads, I'm not even sure who all they contacted to do this, but they have called their supervisors to put in those requests to get things done. So it's not that we don't know about it, or the city doesn't know about it. We do, and if somebody calls me or my office, I do what everybody else does, which is contact three-one-one and get it into the system. Now, if it doesn't get done, if things are still left out and not being taken care of, that's when I want you to call me and say, Gina, I put this in way back, and it just was not done. Sometimes it's a matter of funding. Sometimes it's a matter of maybe people came out and looked at the issue, and they thought they fixed it, or maybe they repaired it to the degree that the city was okay with, but sometimes the resident is not okay with it. So we take a closer look at it to try to make sure that we can get things resolved. But again, I thank you all for coming. Your being a part of this really helps me do my job, and I just look forward to working with everybody as we go forward. And Mr. Chairman, if I might, I've got a couple other things I want to, is it okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I know this has been a long meeting.
No, go.
Sometimes it just happens that way. We don't always expect all of these appeals and discussions that take longer than we might have... We, we don't always expect all of these appeals and discussions that take longer than we might have, uh, thought we were going to. But again, thank you for coming. And Mr. Dennis had mentioned that, um, the mayor came out and actually toured Hillsdale with us. Mr. Peavy was with us along with Tony Eubride and Mr. Dennis, of course. And we toured the neighborhood and looked at some of the issues that, well, I think all of the issues primarily that, that he was concerned about. So we know what they are. We have turned in everything we can. Mr. Peavy pulled off some of his crews to go out to Hillsdale to take care of some of these issues, topping the list that they already had. So they took them out of order. Uh, Mr. Dennis, she didn't turn, uh, sign in to speak. Bethelina, would you like to speak? Happy to let you come to the podium. Okay, thank you. So, just to give you some more background, um, I know you've heard some of this, but USA owns more than four hundred properties in the Hillsdale community. And you know where the campus is located versus where the neighborhood is. Cody Road, um, Old Shell Road, and of course the campus are, are the boundaries. Um, the northernmost boundary is where Cody Road is. And USA owns some properties up toward Cody Road. But back in two thousand and six, they sold properties where the Habitat for Humanity development is. So they don't own those anymore. Those are strictly Habitat for Humanity. Um, until two thousand and eight, um, the properties that USA owned throughout the community were, were rentals. And you've heard about that. They were student housing or some of them were student families. And longtime owners in Hillsdale had come to me and had complained vociferously about the, the plight of these homes. They were blighted. They were terrible. People were not taking care of them. At that time, USA was not a good landlord. We held meetings with them. We tried to ticket them as best we could. But as you know, state-owned property is something that the city has no jurisdiction over. So we went round and round with them. And they finally decided to get out of the rental business and they demolished every one of those houses, which is why you see so many vacant lots when you drive through Hillsdale. They are vacant for a reason. Um, USA ended their rental program, so now we have the vacant properties. But then in, in two thousand and ten, as you've heard about, the former administration allowed USA to erect barricades on some streets where USA owned most, if not all of the properties, they were fronting those areas, to prevent an ongoing problem with illegal dumping. You've already heard about that. Uh, when they put those barricades in, they were supposed to try to make them dead-end streets. But people still drive around them and try to go where they're wanting to go. And those streets, as you know, have not been resurfaced. And that is because they do not front any properties for the most part. There are six in the back of the neighborhood that still are, um, either owner-occupied or rentals where people live. Six in the very back. There was such a problem with, with dumping. Not only were they dumping on these vacant lots, but they were, they weren't all just waiting to get to the vacant lots. They were dumping on, in yards where people lived. I got so many complaints about this that when they came to us to ask, can't you do something? That's what we did. And the administration allowed it to happen. The barricades have stopped primarily all of the illegal dumping. It's much better today. They've also stopped, uh, traffic going back into the side of the campus. Um, the people at USA say that has helped, um, keep traffic out that shouldn't be there. Their crime rate has gone down. And it also makes things safer for the neighborhood itself. Today, within those barricaded areas that USA put up, um, USA owns all but those six properties. Uh, two of those are vacant. And of course, the city did install some barricades within those areas where the, the streets have washed out. But they are within the barricaded areas where USA installed those barricades. Um, the city has nothing to do with this line that has been referred to. There is a map that the University of South Alabama provided to us showing us all of the properties. Um, on one of the maps, it did have a zigzag line. And what that meant, if you look at the legend on the map that I provided to, uh, members of the Hillsdale community, it says it is a demarcation of property to keep, acquire versus sell. And I understand that that line was put on this map back in two thousand and six. From what the University of South Alabama has told me, and I really don't wanna speak for them, but they have told me that that line was just there as something they were looking at in two thousand and six, that they are not looking at it now. I've spoken about prior meetings that, um, about the illegal dumping. I don't need to go back through that. Um, you've heard enough about, I think, the illegal dumping and why those barricades were put up today. Um, and I don't wanna speak for the University of South Alabama about what they do or do not do. But if you drive through the neighborhood, you'll see these vacant lots. USA, from what I can tell and from what I have been told, cuts the grass. They do not come and use shovels or weed eaters or whatever they need to do to shovel out the, the grass and the weeds in the gutters themselves. Well, neither does the city of Mobile. We don't do that on any of our streets. We don't do that on heavily trafficked corridors either. I would love it if we did. It would certainly make it look better. The only people that can do that or that do do that now are, are homeowners. And if South wants to bring the shovels out and kill the grass and the weeds in the gutters in front of their homes, we'd love it. More power to them if they would do it. Streets that are barricaded, uh, front at least two hundred vacant properties. And all of these are owned by the University of South Alabama. We have been told that the University of South Alabama wants to keep these properties for future use. I don't know what their future use, use is, but they have said they want to keep those properties for some kind of future use. And I don't believe that using capital improvement dollars that I can use elsewhere for other needs is a wise investment in resurfacing streets that front vacant properties where the University of South Alabama has asked us to vacate streets where we are trying to work with the community to decide what to do with those. If we resurface those streets, all we're doing right now is making a smooth ride for crews to come cut the grass. There are plenty of entrances and exits from Cody Road for people who live in the neighborhood to get to without resurfacing all of these streets where nobody lives. I mentioned vacating the streets. I think Mr. Dennis mentioned building a wall. I think he's taking a, a page out of President Trump's book on that one. We are talking about the possibility of vacating the streets, putting in cul-de-sacs or tees so that we can create a screen, uh, for the neighborhood to bring the neighborhood in, to make it all, um, kind of enclosed, if you will. It will be one neighborhood that Mr. Hart mentioned is where people live anyway within that area. What would happen then, the streets would become just natural vegetated areas. Um, the University of South Alabama has told me that they would provide the land that would be needed to build these cul-de-sacs. They will also come in and crumble up the, the pavement and plant trees, which again, provides screening for the neighborhood. The city then would provide any of the infrastructure work that would be needed to build the cul-de-sacs and the tees for these streets. This will also help with any traffic that would be trying to come in to South Alabama for football games. We've discussed traffic and patterns and the desire of the neighborhood to not have traffic for this new stadium coming through their neighborhood. If the streets are cul-de-sacked and teed off and you can't get through, then no traffic to the stadium will be able to, to drive through. This is not a done deal. We haven't gotten everything agreed to, but that's what is in discussion. The zigzag, uh, line that has been referred to, again, is just a demarcation that was put in in two thousand and six. And it means nothing to me or to us today. It was just something done in two thousand and six that was put on a map. The streets in Hillsdale were resurfaced back in oh-nine. We used CDBG dollars for the most part, as we did for neighborhood entrances and miles of sidewalks that were done. And I can tell you that within neighborhoods today, we don't build sidewalks within neighborhoods. This was something pretty unusual for us to come into a neighborhood and build sidewalks. And if we can get developers to come in and build homes on those vacant lots that are closer to Cody Road, they too will be required to put in a sidewalk. You have to build a sidewalk in front of your house. And so we will have a more consistent sidewalk, um, path throughout the neighborhood if we can get someone to come in and build homes. We have to make it inviting for people and developers will want to build and then to come in and buy. We're having conversations now with the administration on how to help people be able to purchase homes. So all of this is ongoing. And a lot of it truly is because South Alabama's building a stadium. So it started a lot of these conversations, things that, you know, we liked to do and wanted to do. But now because they're building the stadium, it really kind of brings it to the forefront even more so than in the past. Mr. Dennis is correct that some of those streets where he lives, the resurfacing stopped because that was CDBG money and we ran out of money. We did what we can do. And I have talked to Mr. Amberger, um, and during the two thousand and eighteen program, whatever leftover funds we have from the resurfacing, we will do in front of his house and some of those properties to get as far as we can. But again, I just do not see that resurfacing all the way to campus on these lots where nobody lives is a wise use of my funds. If we cul-de-sack and bring these in, we will have to resurface the entire neighborhood because we'll be putting in new pavement leading up to the cul-de-sacs. So in order to make it all look consistent, then we'll have to resurface the whole thing. If and when the city does vacate the streets, we've been discussing a lot of things. And we have a meeting set Thursday to discuss with the University of South Alabama and city engineer Nick Amberger to go over some of these. Uh, I think it will be in our best interest to keep an open mind as we go forward to see what might be a possibility. I've also spoken with Chief Batiste about how, uh, cul-de-sacking or putting in tees might impact a community on the safety. He has assured me that anything like that, that helps enclose a property or properties, makes the community safer. I've also spoken to real estate experts who've confirmed for me that cul-de-sacks or teeing off streets to enclose neighborhoods with naturally wooded lots as buffers are a positive for property values. And I know everybody's concerned about property values and exactly, you know, what your neighborhood looks like. I believe the solution that, um, is that Mr. Hart, Ms. Gibson, Mr. Love, and the entire neighborhood is for us all to work together in union with each other to make things better in Hillsdale. We have a great chance now to do some things in Hillsdale. And I think we need to be able to take advantage of the opportunity. And let's all keep an open mind, work together as a group, and let's make things happen for the neighborhood. Um, and I think that is a true opportunity that we have and we don't want to let, get away from us. So thank you. I, I appreciate your indulgence in making these remarks. I haven't really said a whole lot in these past weeks. And I wasn't here last week, uh, to hear Mr. Dennis because my chemo appointment was, uh, moved up due to the weather. So I just, again, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the indulgence in letting me speak. I also, if anybody wants it, I have a list of the CIP-funded projects that are being completed or being bid out now, as well as some of the maintenance, uh, issues that are underway that I got, uh, from the administration, uh, yesterday. So thank you again.
And that's for Hillsdale.
For, for Hillsdale, yes, yes, yes.
No, no problem at all. Thank you, uh, Mrs. Gregory. She's working hard to make District Seven a slice of heaven. And thank all of you, all Mr. Love and Mr. Hart and even Mr. Dennis. Thank you. No, because we don't have answers. Yes, sir. Thank you. Glad to, glad to have you here today. Uh, Mayor, City Clerk?
Reggie Hill.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Um, to the administration, uh, the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good afternoon. Um, I rise today to speak briefly in this.
You need your name and address, please.
Meeting's been a long meeting. Uh, Reggie Hill, one thousand and seven, uh, Center Street. My apologies. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I rise today to speak in regards to the budgeting season that we're here and investing in public safety. Now, several times, um, and Councilman Small has commented on it a couple of times as well, as Councilman Dave about me coming down, speaking about drainage. So I have to always start off with that piece. I believe that that is an important component to the safety of the city, particularly with, uh, this being a season for a lot of the storms that could come through. I just want us to always have our eyes and ears, um, to the pavement and making something happen with that. I had the privilege of speaking this previous weekend at an event concerning climate change. And as the key component of that with the water levels rising, we already know how detrimental it is, even if it just rains a while here within the city, particularly downtown and being raked by this water. So I want us to be continuously looking at all the ways that we can invest in the drainage of the city because if something serious comes through, you know, that could be detrimental. The next piece before I begin, and I'm gonna do my best to stay to my missionary Baptist roots and keep this short, um, but before I go forward, I do wanna commend, uh, Ms. Anitra Henderson for her works that she did with the YES Initiative this summer. Because I believe that the youth component is very critical for us moving forward as well with safety in the city. And I don't think she gets the credit that she deserves as much that she does. Um, and I actually have members of my program who participated some two years. And one was his first year in the program. And it's, it's amazing to see the steps that we can take, things in the summer. But I want to see us making investments into something year-round. Last week, I sent an email to Ms. Barbara Wilson. And I hope that she has shared that with each of the members of the council regarding how I believe that we each could invest in the safety moving forward in the city. And through even starting by putting a dent in it or that drip of water on the rock through performance contracts. This is an easy way to do it. And I think the best way to have a proposal for that is to actually look at performance. What has been done that could actually lead towards eradicating those problems that we see. Well, if you have a program that has worked with students who've been in Strickland, who works with young people who've been affiliated with gangs, young people who've been arrested, young people who are doing a lot of harm to the community and watch them make complete one-eighties, that can then become the pilot to what could be funded within the city to really make the difference. It's an old phrase, you can't teach an old dog new tricks. Okay? Well, if we have an opportunity to teach the young people who could then be the inspiration for the future, I think that we really can make that change. And then if we start now, because this is not a light switch situation. You can't just turn this on and off. You have to invest in this and over time expect that it will be able to yield the results that you put in it. But I mean, if you even just reflect in this thing biblically, let's look at Isaiah eleven-six. "The wolf shall dwell with the lamb, the leopard shall lie down with the young goat, the calf and the young lion, and the fattening will be together, and a little child shall lead them." So I am in complete belief that the examples of the young people can be that piece of the puzzle that solves the issues that we see in the community. We can't expect adults who've been doing a lot of the same things to just stop out of the blue. But I believe that that example from the child can inspire them to do something different. But until we're willing to actually invest in those things that have been making the difference, we can't really expect to see a change. So again, please, look into all the ways that we can work with the drainage. And then the resources are definitely there. I will say this. And Councilman Dave's always asked us to bring ideas of how we can say, what can you remove? Like if I, if I, I'm, I'm sure y'all are familiar with, um, Auburn University, who came and they had the, um, solution studio that was here. And they were doing the signage and all of these, uh, different projects of how they can beautify neighborhoods. Well, that's an entity that we could use right here without any, any resources. But yet we'll spend resources, sometimes in six-figure amounts, to sit and have a conversation about something that we could have had for free. And these things, resources that we need for these other services would have been there. So that's my only thing. I just want us to look at easy examples like that and actually look with people who have been consistently engaged and actually have things that work. Um, as, as usual, I'm very appreciative of your turn, um, allowing us to speak and be a part of the democratic process. And, uh, I hope that we can all work together to make this happen for the city of Mobile. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Consent resolutions held over thirty-one, six-two-seven authorized mayor to accept any grant funds and to enter into a memorandum of agreement for participation in the Southwest Alabama Regional Highway Safety Office.
So moved.
Second.
All of motion, second in the discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Resolutions held over zero-one, six-three-O and six-three-one authorized agreement with found design to lead a wayfinding signage program and streetscape design initiative and authorized agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for Dolphin Street widening from Sage Avenue to west of I-65 at Springham Memorial Hospital.
Mayor, City Clerk, we need to take those items separate.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay. So zero-six-three-O authorized agreement with found design.
So moved.
Second.
In the discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I think it was great timing. I'm sorry Reggie left. You know, we often talk about, uh, things. This is one I've just had a, um, a lot of, I know, internal struggle on. I've seen, I've seen places back in the day, a long time ago, when I was, I was appreciative of those signs. Um, I was in a city I didn't know and it was before we had cell phones, before we had iPads, before we had GPSs in all our cars. Um, and it was a big struggle to, sometimes to figure out where to go if these, these signs weren't there. And it was a big struggle to, sometimes to figure out where to go if these signs weren't there. And, you know, some people don't even know we have them now. We do have them now. But the reason we don't have them now is because we're tucked into this. And I just typed in H-I-S-T, and it gave me a list of museums. And if I wanted to go to the Mobile Police History Museum, all I have to do is hit the button, and it'll tell me how to get there. It's, it's real-
On South Yoakim Street toward Government Street.
And if I go to the next intersection, it's going to tell me a turn. And so, you know, in the light of the many cuts that so many deserving organizations and call centers are taking now, I think this is a time when the council might be, and it's right to say, "Let's hold up. Let's do something different with that money and be the body that is a good steward of the tax dollars." Thank you.
Any further commentary, Mr. Dave? You know one else?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you. I appreciate that sentiment from Councilman Williams. And I too struggled with this because proper signage, when it's nice and monumental-type signs that really stand out and don't compete with other things. But right now, our whole sign code in our city needs adjusted, and I think there are residents throughout Mobile that will be looking forward to the map of Mobile when we work on those codes. The idea for me was not just looking at the study that this would produce and perhaps even some ideas on what our signage could cohesively look like around our city, was how much would it cost to then implement the plan? So, I'd like to hold back in spending this initial design phase until there's an understanding of exactly how much we would be budgeting in the future because just to come back with the plan and then no identified funding source to implement it was a concern that my office had.
Anyone else? Well, my office had the concern that it wasn't a local firm. We need to spend local. These are all our dollars. And I see a lot of contracts that go to merited people that are a thousand miles away, 500 miles away. We won't ever know how to do it if we don't get a chance to do it. That's just kind of how I see it. So, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Item fails. Two in favor, and I believe five in opposition. Ma'am, City Clerk?
Okay. 01631 authorize agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for Dolphin Street widening from Sage Avenue to west of I-65 at Spring Hill Memorial Hospital.
So moved.
Second.
Public motion second in the discussion?
I would like to say a few words about this one. I regularly, and I suspect other council persons do, receive complaints. And I, I travel this piece of real estate myself, and I have multiple complaints. But the, you know, it's very disagreeable to travel from Sage Avenue to Rhymes Road on Dolphin Street. The lights aren't lined up, and even at like eight o'clock at night, and it's stop-go traffic. And this is the first step in addressing a number of issues on that section of road, which is traveled by thousands and thousands of people every day. So, I welcome it. I look forward to it and certainly hope that it will resolve a lot of our issues out there.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Gregory?
Also, just piggybacking on what Mr. Dave said, some time ago, we had talked about a project similar to this, but it was more wide-ranging and had some issues that business owners in that area were very upset about. So, what they have done now with this is come back and they have tweaked the proposals so that businesses in the area are okay with it. It's not going to harm them. It will just make things run easier. So, I think this is a good thing for us, especially for everyone who drives this area because it is truly a bottleneck and needs some work. So, appreciate all the work that has gone into this.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 37633 through 6651.
Motion to suspend rules for immediate consideration of Resolution 107633 through 60, I got 644.
651.
651.
Second.
Just roll it up to them.
Public motion in second. Mrs. Gregory, I'm, pardon me, Mrs. Lambert. I'm going to ask that we lay over 37638 for two weeks, but with the exception of that one, can we take them all?
Oh, yeah, we can take them all. We'll-
Just call that one out.
I'll call that one out.
Thank you. But can we take them all at one time?
638?
Yes, sir. That's, yes, sir. I want to meet with the-
Oh, this is St. Francis Street?
He's right there.
Willie's Place?
Oh, I didn't know that. I didn't know that, John.
Did you know that he built a bar one time and was ready to move in, and the city told him no on the eve of? I don't know if you know that.
Oh, yes. Well, John, let me say this. This is my standard practice. When someone comes before the council for this type of license, I ask to meet with the owner. I've been doing that for four and a half years, so I'm not singling you all out. But I know exactly who you all are, and I can remember you all being here with that other bar, so I'm not going to do that. Thank you, John, for bringing that to my attention. We can take them all at one time, please.
Okay. Okay, so we're not-
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. 37, did we move?
No, let's take them all at the same time. Take them all, please.
37633 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class II package store license for safe package store on Airport Boulevard. 37634 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail license for 2018 Mobile Grill Cheese Meltdown in Cathedral Square. Recommend an approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer on/off premises license for Mama Goldberg's Deli O'Shelled Road. Recommend an approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine on/off premises license for Chalure Method Brew and Espresso on Dolphin Street. Recommend an approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license for Ziegler Chevron on Ziegler Boulevard. Recommend an approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class I license for Willie's Place on St. Francis Street. 4639 through 643 fixing the cost for securing the structures at 1814 Clinton Avenue, 429 African Town Boulevard, 1350 St. Stevens Road, 2663 Five Drive South, 1750 Virginia Street. 6644 and 651 are determining expenditures of discretionary funds for contribution to Providence Hospital Foundation Festival of Flowers and for the contribution to Hillsdale Community Development Corporation serves a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved.
Second.
Public motion in second. Any discussion? I just want to congratulate you all. I've seen some pictures of what you're doing on Facebook. I look forward to coming and being a regular patron, if you have sweet tea. So, I'm looking forward to that. And thank you for taking another chance on the city of Mobile. You could have easily just said, "The heck with Mobile. I'm going somewhere else." However, that last disaster, you all didn't, and we thank you for that. Any further discussion?
You said Long Island Iced Tea?
Go with me and monitor, trustee. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, 21645.
Motion to suspend rules for immediate consideration of Resolution 21645.
Second.
Motion in second in the discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item, oh, well, go ahead, ma'am.
2165 authorize contract for purchasing more and rouse for Hackmore Park drainage repairs and park improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Public motion in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01650 through 47648.
According to council rules, those resolutions were laid off formally.
Call for public hearings, 41649 call for public hearing to approve the application of Louis Peter Eminck fundraising, doing business as King Limos for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a limousine service scheduled September 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Public motion in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is called. Announced, pardon.
Announcements.
Mr. Williams?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Small?
No, thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
I'd just like to say, Toluville Committee meeting will be Thursday, September 20th, at the Toluville Library. Looking forward to see all the citizens in Toluville at that meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
No announcements.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I appreciate our moment of silence in memory and in honor of 9/11/2001. The, this month was proclaimed as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and I'd just like to read some dates of some activities that are taking place in our community. On September 19th, the USA Hospital in the Women's and Children's Hospital will be having a bell-ringing event. And that's also when our superheroes will repel and honor those children who have rung the bell for their cure for cancer and their good health. The other thing that happens that evening is the RSA Tower will go gold in honor of the month. So, be sure. I hope that our community will highlight that, especially our media services, to let people know how important that is. On September 22nd, there's a St. Jude Run Walk to End Childhood Cancer at the Battleship Parkway. And on November 3rd, we'll get out of the month, but there is a Cure Starts Now for DIPG Warrior Walk at the Battleship Parkway as well, and that is the brain cancer that took the life of Aubrey Nichols that was so noticeable in our community, but there are many children also suffering from that same catastrophic disease. And also, on November 22nd, there's a Thanksgiving Day Camp at Camp Rappa Hope, which is the Medical Alliances Camp for children with cancer, and a Turkey Trot for Hope. Early registration is going on now, and that's at Spanish Plaza Downtown for that walk. Again, that's November 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rich. Mrs. Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Planning a couple of meetings for District Seven. The District Seven Community Meeting for October will be announced shortly. It will be at the end of the month at the Mobile Botanical Gardens. We are also in the process now of planning my annual Christmas meeting, which will again be at the museum around the 1st of December. We will again recognize all of our community action groups, homeowners associations, public safety workers, and we will include the other first responders who don't always get included in some of our recognitions, and that will be our public service workers as well. So, we'll be inviting all of them and trying to plan for some entertainment like we did last year. We had the Mary B. Austin Singers, and they were really terrific. So, all those things coming up. And also, I want to say a big thank you to Nick Amberger, who came out yesterday and met with me and a couple of residents to talk about some flooding issues over by Loretta Park. The water continues to pool there on these streets, making it very difficult for people to get through. So, we are looking at some options of how to cure this without having to do an enormous capital project on drainage. So, we are looking at some options, and hopefully, they will work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Announcing from the administration, Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In honor of 9/11, for those fallen heroes and those who still stand, we just wanted to acknowledge that the Blue Mass is taking place today many for public safety. Men and women are at that mass, and we appreciate them for not only acknowledging those heroes, but standing for us every day. So, thank you.
100%. Ma'am, City Clerk?
Before we, you make the motion to recess into executive session, I just wanted to acknowledge that we do have the declaration on record in my office.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Cochran, Madam's counsel attorney?
Mr. Britton Bonner is here. He's an attorney with Adams and Reese. He is, I assume, one of the negotiators representing the city. He wants to discuss three economic development projects. The Open Meetings Act allows council to discuss those matters in executive session when there is a proper declaration. Mr. Bonner has personal knowledge of that and will make the required declaration. And I believe he's already submitted it in writing, so it'll be part of the record. Just so that you guys know, it's fine for you to-
I'm saying, they're going to be done today.
Yes, sir. Right after the meeting.
Yes, you've received the declaration in your packet. This matter is consistent with the exceptions the Open Meetings Act enabled. In order to move into executive session, we need a roll-call vote from this council. Moving into executive session. Also, you are not going to be expected to take any action coming out of that executive session, so you can anticipate taking about 45 minutes and then not returning.
We would not be able to stay through that.
Well, let me ask you. So, in light of that, do we adjourn this meeting?
No, you moved to go into executive session.
Second?
Okay. Vice President Manzi?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Dave?
Yes.
Councilmember Rich?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, you need to announce that you will not reconvene after the session.
Ladies and gentlemen, we will not be reconvening. Thank you again for your interest in your local government. I hope you have a great day.